Ready?
Yeah.
All right, it's 5:30, we're gonna get this meeting started.
I'll start.
We're gonna start off with call to order. And then roll call.
Mayor Born.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Olivares.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start citizens' communication, I'm just gonna go over a couple of House rules. It's been a few months since we've done this. During comments, be prepared to stand and make your comment. You will be allowed up to three minutes. No person may donate their time to another person. State your full name and address at the podium here. Direct your comments to the city council only, not to everyone else in the room. Rules of conduct, no disparaging or inflammatory remarks directed at city council or city administration. Don't direct your comments to the audience. Any speaker or audience member that engages in disruptive behavior may be subject to removal from the meeting. Members of the audience are not allowed to speak out of turn or to interrupt when others are speaking. Thank you. Okay. We're gonna move on to four citizens' communication. Doug Williams, you're up.
Counsel, mayor, city manager, my name is Doug Williams. I reside in the west ward of Rockdale, and my concern is weather-driven. If the current weather pattern stands, or if it's just a part of a seven-year cycle, we still have four years left in it. I urge you, and I suggest, that you keep generating a current critical systems inventory that needs electric power in event of a storm. I also suggest that we, the city, generate a locations list of suitable buildings for shelters. Buildings large enough to house many residents containing a kitchen and bathrooms. And if we get the list generated, then we need to investigate in getting transfer switches installed on those locations. The county is investigating purchasing portable generators, but we need to be ready in the event the power goes down to plug in to the portable generators. Thank you.
Mr. Melton.
Mayor Born, city council, and all city employees here, thank you so much for your service to our community. I appreciate all that you do for the betterment of our town. Wanted to speak on the general citizens' communications about Earth Day. I don't have Tati here today, so you have to see me instead. But right now, we have five big projects that we are planning, and for each of those projects, we have community leaders who are going to be leading and working with the students. Those locations are the city cemetery, the ISD administration building, the Rockdale Housing Authority out at Cordova, the senior center, and then, of course, the National Honor Society, who always does the litter pickup for the two-mile stretch on 79 Highway. There are other projects possible. We are only limited by the number of volunteers that we have. And so, again, our day of service is Friday, April 21st, from 9:00 a.m. until noon. We start at the high school gymnasium. We typically have about 80 to 120 junior high and high school students who show us the best and brightest of Rockdale and go out by buses to these different sites. If you have a project that you would like to be involved with, or you would like to lead, please see me or see someone on our committee. Cal Cook is on our committee. Monique Gutpart is on our committee. Dale Perry Giles is on our committee. And then I signed up, I don't know if this is the time for me to speak for, on the agenda item. Okay.
Now, we'll get to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Callahan.
Good morning, good evening, city council members. I got an issue with the avenue that I live on, going from the elementary school, which is the only playground that the kids on the avenue, Bell Avenue, have. All I've been seeing in the kid, with the kids there are the unchaperoned. There's a lot of little kids on my avenue that needs a place to play or go to to be safe. And that's their backyard or front yard. I had permission by asking a neighbor, Cindy Allen. She allowed me to utilize her name because her child and others briefly came close of being hit. It's like a speed zone. You have speed bumps up towards Veterans Park. And I've asked, this is the third time I'm asking, about signs on West Bell Avenue. No parking on either side. If not, how about another sign with the speed limit lighted up? So when you go east and west, down West Bell Avenue, the speedsters know what the speed limit is. Another issue that I got, I don't know, I wear this shirt because I had to let the water run to clean up. The water issue, I don't know why it's still an issue. That's all I got to say. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Collier Perry.
I'm Collier Perry, live at 1803 Yocley Road in Rockdale. I was here last month, same issue. I encouraged you to not provide public funds for any organization that is not completely transparent in their financial dealings. I'm here again this month. I know that you can't answer any comments that I have. Maybe the city manager can. Has anything been done? I'll be back every month until you take some action on this, one way or another. So, encourage you to not give money to any organization that is not financially transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the citizens' communication. We're gonna move on to item number five, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda, considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review.
I'll make a motion, we consent agenda is provided.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Item number six. Consider and take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance updating the fee schedule.
I'm showing it on page 65.
So this would be the second reading for this ordinance?
Yes. There were fees that were added from the last time. We put in the vacant structure ordinance and added those in here. And then we also added a site development permit, because we're gonna have that coming up with cornerstone. That is a fraction, one, I think it's one and a half percent of the infrastructure cost. So that as we go out there and issue them grading permits, so they can start doing the grading for land, for the roads, installing the water and sewer, we have a way to recoup the staff time. And so those were the only changes that got added into this. From the last time.
Is that a grading permit fee? What was added?
Yes, sir. It's a land development permit fee. So, for example, when you do cornerstone, they have, they're gonna have to go in and cut that land and make it ready both for houses and for roads. And when, before they do that, they'll be putting in the water and the sewer. We have to have inspections that happen with that. We have to issue permits, and we did not have a fee for that. So we added that in.
How good?
So that's more like a site development plan, a fee for site development? Is that not a... I just wanna make sure we're not doubling, double dipping on them. That's not one of the boxes you have to check on when you pull a building permit fee?
Correct.
That has associated cost with it?
Correct. So, if you're doing actual land development, it's all that you do before you're even ready to go vertical. It's putting in the roads, it's putting in the water, and it's putting in the sewer and making sure that those grades work. And because we haven't had subdivisions out here since the 1980s, it's the first time that this has happened. So, there will be staff expenses that go along with it with issuing the permits, as well as having inspectors that go out there and check it.
So would someone need the same permit if they bought a lot, say, in town in a subdivision that's already developed?
No.
Okay.
No.
And it's based off of percentage, what'd you say it?
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve, this item is read, and take the staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Seven, resolutions. A, consider and take any necessary action on a resolution opposing Senate Bill 1110 that prohibits transferring enterprise funds to the general fund.
So this is a very broad bill that's been filed, and the intent was to go after Austin Power and Light that raised their rates, and in doing so said that they wouldn't have if the city hadn't bled some of their revenue off and to feed their general fund. What it has, though, is an extremely broad effect across the state of Texas that anyone who has an enterprise fund, which is water, sewer, trash, gas, electricity, and there may be another one, that you could not move any funds over. So even the work that we're doing currently with the $27.4 million loan that we got with the Texas Water Development Board that was funded by our water revenue rates but is backed by the taxpayers, so it's being paid through a general fund and the enterprise fund, we could not use those enterprise funds to pay that off. So, the only time that I would go forward with this, if you're comfortable with the resolution, is if this bill moves forward and it impacts the city. If it only goes to residential electricity, then it has no impact to us. Because we don't have, we don't have an electric utility that the city runs.
So how would we, how would we, if in fact this bill moves forward, how would the city of Rockdale oppose? Would we join a something, a coalition of small cities that are opposing this?
Typically, you can do that, you can send the information. We have a very good relationship with Senator Shortner's office, so we would let them know that this is something that the cities are not in favor of, and he's getting a lot of that about the impact that it would have on communities all across the state. Like for Hearn, who does rely on their electric utility, or Giddings, who relies on their electric utility, it could bankrupt their cities to not be able to use any of that revenue. But yes, you just, you typically, on this one, you would just let the senator's office know.
And so, why would we wait to see if the bill moved forward? We would go ahead and...
We can, or if you wanted to see, I'm hearing that the senator's going to change it, and that it's only going to apply to electric utilities, then we'd have no need to oppose him. And because we do have a good relationship with Senator Shortner, and because he has been so instrumental in moving the Texas Water Development Board off dead center and getting us able to do our water project, that it's not something that I would take lightly. So it would only be if it really is gonna move forward. It has been filed, it was filed in February, it has not moved anywhere yet.
May I, if I could, kind of share? I know Barbara, like Barbara is saying, Senator Shortner has been so supportive. I did talk to him about this the other day, and he understands our concerns. But I personally think we should go ahead and approve the resolution. That way we're prepared and kinda ahead of it.
Yeah. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve light item 7A, as read.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. 7B, consider and take any necessary action on a resolution authorizing the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program.
Jim, this is your...
Good morning, everybody. So there's four items on this agenda. There's B, C, and D, and then there's one under action items that are all very similar in nature. But basically, at last council meeting and at the MDD meeting the other day, we agreed to move forward with two different grants from the Texas Department of Agriculture. The first one is the CDBG grant, and this is one where we are proposing to use this grant money to enlarge the East Cameron lift station. And so there's some reasons for that, because it ties into this new industrial park property that we're working on. And so that's the first one. The second one is the downtown revitalization program through TDA. And essentially, we are thinking going after more sidewalks. So these would be the city street sidewalks, not the text dot sidewalks. So, basically, it'd be a way for us to leverage some money from the state so that we could have a batch of sidewalks that look good. So these first couple of resolutions are authorizing the application and authorizing us to move forward. The other item, the other action item, wait a second, oh yeah, C, is selecting the engineer for the CDBG grant.
I thought that's what we did last month, where we did the grant writer.
It's gonna get confusing.
Yes, it is.
Because they're all called community development block grants typically, but they're all for different items. The ones we did before were for housing. This is, the one that he's doing right now is for a lift station.
The first two were housing? We did one with, we did two of them with two different grant writers.
Yes.
But yours were...
Well, so Langford was for the lift station, and KSBR is for the sidewalks downtown.
And now this is to actually apply for the, to do the grant, not just to hire the consultant for the grant, but to apply for the grant.
And so the good news for y'all and for everybody here is, at the MDD meeting about two weeks ago, the board passed two different resolutions, basically saying that they would cover the grant match.
Yeah.
So we have the, I can keep it straight, we have the grant writers in place. Now we're looking to approve the...
Apply for the grant.
Apply for the grant.
And then later, you're gonna select the engineer for one of them.
For one of them.
Right. And then we'll do the other engineer next month.
That's the action item that's coming?
Yes, sir.
Tonight, is for the engineer for the lift station?
You got it.
Barbara, do we need three separate motions for C and D?
Yes, we need separate, separate motions for 7B, C, and D.
Go for it, Lynn, you got it. You got it, Lynn.
Y'all gotta start printing bigger for me.
I started bringing my Raiders.
I'll make a motion that we accept 7B for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Application.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. C, consider taking any necessary action on a resolution authorizing the submission of Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, Block Grant Program Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund.
I don't know if it's, which one's which. One of them is to authorize the application, and the other resolution is for the signators, which is just a procedural thing.
The first one was the signator.
Yes.
This is authorizing the submission of the grant.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we accept 7C as presented for the Texas Department of Agricultural, Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Application.
Second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Do I need to, do we need to amend that first one to say signator?
D, consider and take any necessary action on a resolution authorizing the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Downtown Revitalization Program.
I'll make a motion if the council adopt the resolution as read.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Item number eight, action items. A, consider and take any necessary action on the Chamber of Commerce's request of hot funds for $75,000 to replace the roof.
And this is where the council asked to hear from the chamber on what their request was, and we also got their other bid in the packet. So I know Denise is here, and I think she's got a board member here as well. If you want to ask them up to the podium to come speak. And Dunright Roofing's here as well, Bill's here, so if y'all have any other questions about that.
So, I have a question. You asked for $75,000, and looking at Dunright's two proposals in here somewhere, that total, was it like 48 and 12 or something like that?
It was just under 60.
Okay, why 75 versus the, what was presented by Dunright?
So when we, when we first realized there was a real issue, you know, just because of the age and wear and tear of the roof, we had put in an insurance claim, and so we know that there's some damage to the roof decking. There's also, when Bill came out, you know, you could tell that there's a lot of rot in the decorative fascia that are, you know, scroll cut and some other things that's gonna have to be replaced. We just don't know what until we get in there and see. He may be able to tell you a little bit more about it. But there's a consideration for the funds that we're gonna have to do for the replacement of that, you know, all the other incidentals that are gonna cut them up when he comes in there. I think there were soft events that had been closed up that we're gonna have to...
Yeah, all the, all the extras are on the, like a unit, unit schedule costs for pricing on the last page of that proposal. So that'd be just build according to what the material that we use for the schedule.
So the above and beyond is a contingency to cover what you don't know until you uncover.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions. Y'all might be able to answer one, Barbara might be able to answer the other ones. Who owns the building?
The chamber.
The chamber does own it, okay. Is it just the chamber in there, is there also a visitor center also, or visitor?
Visitor Center is in there as well, and then, of course, Hogan Hall next door that we use for meeting spaces, you know, for whoever wants to rent it.
Hey, I read over the, I guess, the do's and don'ts of hot funds. Something in there read about, you can only, whichever entity is asking for it, it's the only one that percentage-wise that can get it. If that makes any sense, like, are y'all asking for the chamber? Are you asking for the visitor center? It has to be one or the other, I thought, somewhere that I read that.
I think they're actually asking for the building. In this case, because the building is historically significant and has a marker, and so they're doing a historically significant repair of that roof. The staff recommendation wasn't to go to the $75,000. It made more sense professionally to go with what we knew was out there, which was $58,000 and change, and then have them also pick up part of it so that they've got skin in the game. But this is actually to assist the building that is historically significant, so it's under the historic preservation part of it.
So, if we're to get audited one day, we're not crossing any boundaries about saying, well, there's two different businesses, two different entities in that building, you can only give it to one and half, or whatever that's read?
The chamber functions as our day-to-day visitor center, our weekday visitor center. So that's just a, an activity that occurs within the chamber.
Barbara, can you remind me how much we gave the Chamber of Commerce this year already?
Roxanne, do you know?
Sorry, I know we gave some money already, which is like our annual, what we give?
Forty.
Forty?
Forty, thank you.
Okay. I mean, I'm not sure, are y'all at liberty to share if you have enough money to cover this?
Yes, ma'am, we, we do have the ability to, to make the, the repairs. I think that what has happened is because we went to the Texas Historical Commission and got it approved so that it still would be considered historically correct, that what we're having to use is considerably more expensive than if we just said, let's put the shingles on it right now, or something like that. So, that did, the cost was, was more than what we had expected. So, if we needed to do it, yes, we could, but then that, you know, dips into what we have available in our reserves, and so we were just, you know, trying to keep the historical part of the building, not only for the city, you know, for everybody that comes through town, but, you know, we use it as well, and the building is gonna deteriorate if we don't have it replaced. So, we were trying to just make sure that we could do it as historically as possible and correctly, and still be able to, to have the marker there. Because if we don't replace it with the approval of the Texas Historical Commission, then we would lose that marker if we, if we changed the roof.
Okay, don't get me wrong, I appreciate everything you do, I just...
No, no, I know.
Was curious about that.
Yeah, we, we do, and, and, you know, if that's what has to be done, then that's what we would have, that's what we would do. But we were just trying to, you know, make sure that we could, you know, get some help in doing that. And I also have tried, I reached out to the Mylum County Historical Society. At first, I did, I did not get any response, nobody would reply to me, because I know they have some funds available as well. I have found somebody that's, that's accepted a, an application for that. Their grants, of course, are very small, but, you know, we're, we're trying to do what we can.
Well, I'm all in, in favor of preserving what is Rockdale as a, you know, Rockdalian, so I personally would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this, the amount, not the seventy-five thousand, but rather the fifty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-six and twenty-one cents.
Hold on, where, where did that number come?
No, go ahead, go ahead, I'm done.
What was, where did the fifty-eight come from, Barbara?
That's the initial bid.
That's the initial bid without any extras.
And I will say that I've had, you know, I've met with insurance out there, and there are just a lot of rotten decking. There's gonna be some fascia issues, there's gonna be additional expenses that will need to be applied. You know, how we disperse this and how you go about that, but I just wanna verify that on their behalf. There will be additional expenses other than just the initial bid of the roof that will come along with this. To what extent, I don't know, a dollar amount. I'm sure Mr. Sylvia has a better idea of that.
It's kinda hard to say, but, you know, like I said, the schedule for the pricing is on that fourth page, so it wouldn't just be a number we're gonna throw out there, it would be build accordingly to the price.
Do you know what the cost would be if it wasn't a historical building, the roof cost?
No, we went strictly with trying to keep the marker there, and when we get, what took our bids, we, we had them base that we could get it approved by the Texas Historical Commission. So, no, sir, I, I couldn't tell you, maybe Bill would have a better idea of what it would cost if we didn't use those materials.
It'd be a less, a fourth of the cost. I mean, the, it's a specialty, it's a stone-coated steel, I mean, it's a fourth of the cost, less than a fourth of the cost if they just went back with shingles, but...
But that takes the historical.
I don't, the Historical Commission wouldn't approve that.
Use their marker.
Yeah.
What does the, the forty that, that we provided earlier, I guess, last year at this point, what does that go for? Is that just going to the general fund?
I mean, for the day-to-day workings of that forty thousand? Right, the Visitor Center, yes.
Yes.
So, that's somebody there at the Chamber building, we have all the, you know, the places for folks to log in, we have information, you know, all brochures, whatever we need, we give information out for them, for the Visitor Center, and...
Who's author, or not authorized, who is Hogan Hall available to, to use?
Yeah, anybody can, can, can choose to, to rent it, yes, sir. You don't have to be a member if that's what you were, if that's what you're, anybody in, that can use it. We have folks that come in and offer all sorts of services in there.
Did you say to rent it, or do y'all let them just use it? If they're Rockdale citizens, or how does that work?
It's, what is it right now, fifty dollars? It's fifty dollars for, um, on members. And then members, you know, they're able to rent it, use it, well, I'd say, they, they can save the space, and then they can come in there and use it without a cost if for, if you're a member, for two times. Is it two times? How many times do they get to use it? Two times, so members get to use it two, two times without any charge.
And a citizen, let's say I wanna go in there and have a baby shower or something, I could use that once a year, or how does that work?
It's fifty dollars and you can, for the, for the rental, and you can, if you wanted to host baby showers every month, I mean, you can just, just make sure it's available, you just needed to contact the office and then...
You know, I don't know if that information is out there, and, you know, of course, when we talk about this money, we're talking about our taxpayers' money, so I think if we could share more of that information, because the citizens would be supporting it to make that more accessible to them.
And we do have lots of folks that do.
Okay, I just didn't know.
So, but certainly, we can do that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't know all the answers, I've only been on the board for a year.
You're doing great.
I wanna share something once again, so we don't get in trouble on audits. This is from the hot funds. Additionally, if a city with a population of under one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand does not allocate any hotel tax money for a convention center, the tax code prohibits the city from allocating more than fifty percent of its hotel occupancy tax for historical restoration or preservation projects. So, what is this being classified as?
It'd be historical.
Where are we at on, on the year?
Yeah, because we, we did, gave Vision, we gave Vision Historic money, too.
That would mean we're already in trouble. That's what, that's earned. So...
That would mean, yeah.
What's our annual, about three-hundred thousand a year? Do you know? Hotel funds, how much are we per year for hot funds? So, we're close.
I was gonna ask you, is that because eighteen ninety, was that this year or last year?
Does that go calendar year, fiscal year, what is that?
Yeah, how does that go?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Calendar, calendar year, fiscal year, does anybody know what this is making reference to?
So, eighteen ninety-five would be included in this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, what did they give them?
A hundred.
I don't even remember.
It's like a hundred and one.
I mean, what other historic building would y'all foresee donating to?
Yeah, we already tabled it.
Trying to get it going. So, let me, I know you've made a...
No, go ahead.
There's some unanswered questions for us, and I'm talking out loud, thinking out loud here. I, I, I think we have some homework that we still need to do.
On our end.
On our end. And we realize we pushed you last month so that we could do some homework, and we didn't finish our homework, shame on us. So, I'm, I'm under the impression that I'm, I'm, I'm willing to support your project and help y'all with the roof cost, but I think if we do this before we have finished our homework, we're gonna potentially get ourselves in a pickle. So, what I would suggest is, if you have the funds, proceed with your project knowing that we're gonna do absolutely everything we can to get you this money, but I'm not willing to put my neck out there until we're finished with our homework.
Because Barbara, if we were to approve the fifty-eight tonight, that's set in stone, like if we found out later, oh my God, we only had thirty to give, and we couldn't contact them back and say, hey, guys, the fifty-eight's off, you have thirty, we couldn't do that, right?
You could say up to the amount allowed, and then I'll check with the comptroller's office tomorrow, because they're the ones that would be overseeing the audit, that's the person that I call, because we had quite a bit in savings on that, so I don't know if that's, if there can be any money that could be allocated from this year's revenue plus whatever we had in savings. I think it still is gonna leave about two-hundred and, two-hundred and something thousand dollars in our coffers right now. So, if you wanted to make that, to the extent allowable for historic preservation, because there won't be another one. I think the two that we're supporting are the two historic buildings that we have.
It's not what's in your coffers, though, it's what's your annual...
You're amending your motion to, uh...
But what I would do is make sure, like, talk to the comptroller and say, if we're allowed to spend so much on historic preservation, and we've already done this, can we spend this, this much of the hot funds of our annual and then dip into, because they expect that you're spending it every year, and we actually just kinda put it in a pocket and saved it for a while, if you wanted to do that.
And how do y'all feel?
And if we have to reimburse them through different dispersments, I mean, I think that's only fair. I mean, we've given out quite a bit of our hot funds for the same reason, historical. Now, if, we've now come to find ourselves in jeopardy of crossing that line, then we still owe them, in my opinion, the same chance that we gave to others, and, and, and so if we have to disperse those funds even the following year, I, I think that's what we need to look into as well.
I think, I think that would be, that would be fair, only because this other thing, which I agree, we need to be careful, it didn't come up whenever we were considering giving to Vision Historic, which I love that project as well. I don't think that would be fair to kinda hold it up because of that.
I still would like to see some of our hot funds go towards our kids and fix up the softball fields or baseball fields.
I agree, I agree with you.
That will be, that will be on your next month's agenda.
Yeah.
And that's not historical, so that won't, you know, there won't be an issue there, right?
Just wanna make sure we have enough money left to make a difference out there.
It will be about two-hundred thousand dollars that we have left, or more, more than two-hundred thousand, which...
After the seventy-five thousand or the fifty-eight thousand?
Fifty-eight.
Is what we have left? We would have two-hundred thousand left, Barbara?
Let me verify. It's at the front, it's in the front.
And I agree with Kyle, I, my hope is that we can do that. I just sent Helen a hot funds application, like, over the weekend, so...
Uh, we're currently at two-sixty-five, four-fifty-one, so we'll have over two-hundred thousand. Cause like, the February hot revenue was twelve thousand, two-sixty, and we took out two thousand to pay Civic Plus, which is where we get our tax data, and so we're currently at two-sixty-five.
And Brad, is that written on, when you read that, is it the annual revenue?
It says annual, not what's in your bank account.
So, annual revenue received. Might as good as, I'm in a reading.
Okay, okay.
Would there be an opportunity for us to give y'all some money to get started, and then if you get into incidentals or something like that, to come back and ask for more money? So that the Chamber has skin in the game, or, you know, if another grant from Mylum County comes through, something like that?
I mean, if that's what, if that's what has to be done, the roof has to be replaced, and, and already, I mean, if you go with just what the roof repairs are gonna be, we're gonna have plenty of skin in the game when we get in there and have to start replacing, you know, the, the wood and the trim and all of those things, so we will be expending money that we have of our own already.
Do you have a estimate?
Like I said, it needs to be replaced, I mean, we, we don't have a choice anymore. It's to the point now, I mean, people think those are clay tiles or whatever, they're, they're tin, so they're, you know, it's pretty thin, and it's been walked on and dented, and, you know, so it just needs to be replaced.
So, given what the council member Kathy said, if the motion could be that we spend no more than what is allowed on historic projects, I will report back to you what that is, and that that would be the end of it, and then we'll come back next month if there's any extras that would be out there.
In that way, we wouldn't hold them up, stop them.
Do y'all feel comfortable with that, or y'all wanna table it again? What do y'all feel? I mean, do we have another entity that we would foresee coming and asking for historic, well, hot funds from a historic entity?
Do we give to another historical entity?
Is there another historic building in Rockdale that we would draw on?
You could do the depot.
A depot?
Depot's out there, you could, I think they, they've got a marker, I think the Joan and Dan's Motel would have a marker.
No, is there any other organizations that we give to or anything like, like, you know?
No, we have Las Colita, but I don't think that's, that in the city, that's not in the city.
Which one?
Las Colita.
I don't think so.
I don't think they're in the city.
No, you got the Chamber, you had the...
MDD.
MDD, uh...
As a visitor's, not as historic preservation.
Did we already give that?
As the Visitor Center, not the historical part.
Not yet, but that's as a visitor's center, not a, not historic.
Okay, okay, so that doesn't...
I don't know, you keep reading, you can read it three different ways.
Where are you pulling, what's the source? It's on a, it's called the, uh...
All right. So, is your motion good?
Yes, as, uh, do I, go ahead and make an, do I need to make an amendment?
Yes, ma'am, if you would.
Just to make sure it's, uh, okay. All right. So, I'm gonna amend my prior motion, and this would be a motion to approve the recommendation from the Chamber of Commerce and the, for fifty-eight thousand, three forty-six twenty-one, from hot funds to replace the roof, not to surpass the max allowable... Through hot funds.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you, thank y'all for what y'all do.
Keep up with those unit prices.
Okay, next is B, consider, take any necessary action on a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a plat submitted by Corey Hall for property located at S-17100 Ramsey, Block Two, Lots Two, N...
North part of?
North part, huh, three and seven, and Block Three, Lot Three, property known as Rockdale, Mylum County, Texas, in the Block Two, Lots Three-A-N-seven, and Block Three, Lot Three-A.
I could get you to read that again. And I could get you to look at the overlays, but all you really need to know is, it's all in compliance as recommended by staff, there's no reason to deny it, and we recommended it to, uh, to you.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
What's your red writing up there, say, Doug? Is that...
It says, need to stipulate that there is a series of Lot Seven in perpetuity, yeah.
Perpetuity.
There's a, there's a portion of Lot Seven that's... Is that, is that, is that an inheritance in...
No, sir, it's that Lot Seven, if you don't stipulate that the access easement has to go with Lot Seven in perpetuity, then Lot Seven could be landlocked, so we're just stipulating it on the plat.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, we had to stipulate that to keep it from being landlocked, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we take staff's recommendation and approve of the plat subject to the following comment, stipulate that the thirty-foot access easement is to Lot Seven in perpetuity, or unless alternate legal access is provided to Lot Seven.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries six, zero. C, consider and take any necessary action on awarding the engineering services contract for the preparation of the city's two-thousand-twenty-three-twenty-four Texas Community Development Block Grant Application and subsequent engineering contract if funded. Man, I can't breathe.
It's mouthful, isn't it?
Subsequent, well, I can't breathe through my nose, so it's like...
So, we ran a procurement process for engineers for the lift station project, and we received four responses back. Last week, Mayor Barbara and I reviewed the proposals, and we scored them, and KSA Engineers was the, the one that got the most points, and that is our recommendation. And just as a side note, KSA... And just as a side note, KSA was the, uh, original firm that, oh, sorry, they're the firm who designed the original upsized lift station. When y'all were talking about this project about a year ago.
And which? This is again, for the engineering portion of the lift station, correct?
Yes, sir.
And which lift station is the, just?
The East Cameron, it's, uh.
Is it the one was, Los Robles was?
Yes, yes.
Involved with at one time?
Yes.
That's squished and gone?
Yes, it's, I would say on hold.
So my question is, we apply for this grant, we hire these engineers, we get the grant, we do the work. Ros, Los Robles is now off the hook because we've done all the work prior to them getting there?
Nope, because this capacity is specific to a client.
But within that capacity, Los Robles will fall under that, that capacity that has been expanded to.
It's possible, we don't know that for sure yet. But even if there was any other commercial development on that side that that lift station could serve, then the lift station's already expanded.
Right, I understand that, but Los Robles was also willing to contribute to the cost of upgrading this lift station. And backed off of it. And now?
They backed off of their development plan because everything went so hot. So if they come back in, then we would still talk to them that they still need to contribute their fair share to any improvements to that lift station. These improvements he's talking about are not for Los Robles.
I, I realize they're not for them. But they're going to gain all the benefit from this, is that correct?
No, I wouldn't think so. It, it would be amiss if they did. If somebody let their development come through and absorb what we did for a different developer, that would be amiss.
Well, let's don't miss that, okay, move forward. I'll make a motion that we accept item 8C for the hiring of KSA Engineering as recommended. For the lift station, go ahead.
All in favor? Motion carries six, zero. D. Receive the annual MDD audit for fiscal year 2022 from MDD staff.
That's me.
Hello.
So, um, the good news is, um, in our FY 2022 audit, we received a clean audit report from the auditor. There were no deficiencies or any audit findings that the auditor discovered or found, or at least reported. So, so that part's good, clean audits are good, that's the highest standard that, that you can get. Uh, the MDD's total net position increased by about 28% or $226,000. Total assets were up by about 17%. Liabilities were down just a little bit. Revenue was up because we had a really good sales tax year last year. By about $129,500. Expenses were also up, that was mostly from personnel, projects, and repairs to the building. And even of that, $20,000 was a plumbing line repair that, that we, uh, had to make. However, revenues exceeded expenditures by $233,400. And, uh, looking at our budget, we came in under budget. If y'all will remember, last fall, we did a budget amendment because we thought there were some projects that we at least wanted to get on the books. Those didn't happen, so, uh, those actually got carried over into this year. So, uh, we did go, uh, under budget as well. And our, uh, fund balance increased to $648,500.
I had one question, sorry, I can't remember what I was highlighting it. How did, how did assets go up when we sold the properties, that?
That, that's going to be in this year's audit, the 23 audit. Yeah, asset will go down, cash will go up, so it'll balance out.
I got a question, it's not really budget. At one time, wasn't the MDD going to kind of try to flip some offices? Wasn't that part of a, a, a grand, I thought it was a great idea.
So, the original plan, and I don't know if Mr. Collier was on the board at the time, but the idea was, the MDD would buy a building, fix it up, flip it, go to, buy another building, fix it up, and you know, we would just be moving our offices like musical chairs. We, I think we're on building number two, I think the building right next to us, uh, we did own that at one time. That was the original office, uh, now we're on this building. You know, we did talk about that last year, but the board at the time decided, we need to focus our efforts on getting this industrial park ready to go first. And then after that, we can start, we can at least revisit that, uh, project program.
I think it would be, I don't know financially how it looks, but it would be a great asset to the community to, to be able to bring some buildings up, uh.
We did expand our facade grant, so we did do that. So now you can not only make improvements to the facade, but even internal improvements as well. Bringing the, a building up to code or making structural repairs.
Did that go up a dollar amount, Jim, or a percentage?
Of what, I'm sorry?
Did that go up, now that you're including the interior? So is that a percentage of what they spent, or is it a max dollar amount?
Of 15,000's the max. And so you could still use that plus facade. And, uh, we even had another, uh, bucket of money uh, for like any other commercial properties that needed some environmental remediation. Like if there was a gas tank that needed to be pulled out, or any hazardous materials that needed to go. Or even if a building needed to be demolished and then you build a new one in its place.
Have you done that, as far as the gas tanks? I know there's a citizen that was, had that question. Have you acted on that already?
Oh, no, nobody's asked about it.
I'll talk to you about that, okay?
Okay, great.
Alright, you got your questions answered, everybody?
Good job and congratulations on your award.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that.
Round of applause, Mrs. Gibson.
Oh, no, 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 thank you. It's a team effort, thank you though.
The board has done some great things.
They have, and we appreciate y'all.
One of you guys is doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Rockdale Municipal Development District's Audit Report, which is item 8.
D.
D.
D, as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Bill.
Item 8E, consider and take any necessary action on a report from the Homeless Coalition.
So, we met four times between January and March. And we had quite a few people, everybody that served on that, would you stand or raise your hand? We've got people here, okay, we've got Esme, we've got there, okay. We had quite a few people that were interested in the subject. And so the first thing that we needed to do was define the problem. And one of the concerns is that there was a thought that we had people that were being imported to town. And there was concern that Jason was actually, in his efforts of assisting the homeless, was actually bringing them to town, and it turns out that he's not. So, there may be some that are in town, but it's not coming in through the street ministries. So, when you've got homeless, which we ended up settling on probably 15 people locally that are homeless, what do you do to help them? And what was really, really nice about the group is you had people, you had Barrett in the back that has offered them jobs, and that he will help them at, with employment and with places to live. Brittany Bell has offered that she will help to get them their documentation so they can get social security cards, they can get a driver's license, they can get what they need to go to work. And you had Charles Miles, who's a local barber, who's offered to do haircuts for them. Because what they, what the group came up with in rank order is they think that drugs are a significant problem. And that specifically, the methamphetamine prob, problem in our community is the issue. And the sheriff confirmed that. I've also talked to the community of Round Rock and talked to them about what they saw when they were working cases out here, and it was methamphetamines. And that seems to derail people to the extent that they no longer care about having houses. They would rather have methamphetamines. And so they wanted to really bolster what we do with the police department. And Chief Metters said in order for him to address the call load that he has today, he would need 13 officers or five more, which is three quarters of a million dollars. Which we don't have the ability in our budget to do that, but we could perhaps start working towards an officer at a time. And then they wanted to do a, a job-ready program where we get people where they can have an address, where people can send them communication, where they can have toiletries, where they can take showers, where they can, uh, get their documentation, where they can go to Barrett and get a job with him. And create a program that gets what right now is a very manageable amount of people and get them off the street for those that want to. Because there's probably roughly at least a third, five, which is still a big deal, to get them off the street so that they've got a place to live and that they gain their, their self-respect back with working. And then the other part is, if they're on methamphetamines, it could be that they are self-medicating because they have a mental health issue. We do have some mental health resources in this community that are at the one stop. And Esme was the one that brought that to our attention. The only problem is, we're not large enough to have anything that happens on the same day, or in an emergency situation, or after hours. So we still are a community that is very limited in the types of resources that we can put to a homeless population. So the next item is we need places for people to stay. And we brought in Mario Cesares, who's the executive director of the Rockdale Housing Authority. And he is the, he heads the agency that does housing for our area. So it makes sense, rather than anybody else going out trying to do this, that, that we work with him. He can do homeless shelters, he can do veterans, but it's a standardized program so that nobody is doing this as a one-off. And we know what's happening. And you can have places where people can shower, you can separate it by gender, and you can keep it safe. And Mario, again, reiterates, drugs are an issue, they're a scourge in his housing authority, and he is getting them out as fast as he can. But that, that we would coordinate our efforts with another agency to get this done. And then we also adopt a game room ordinance, because it appears that we're having issues, particularly on the east side of town. Where, um, if we have people that are operating at all hours of the day and night. And Bell County snapped this a while ago, and last year they passed an ordinance that you have a limit on the number of games you can have. The hours, their hours of operation are from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And so at your next meeting, we will have a game room ordinance that will mimic that so that we don't have this 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, what appears to be just largely criminal activity. So those were the recommendations that came out. We met, we were, we're meeting weekly until the winter storm hit. And now we'll start to meet quarterly. Is there anything that any of the council members that were there would like to add to that?
Um, I would just like to share, I think originally whenever it came to our attention, it seemed like there was more homeless than what actually we have. So I guess, I, I don't think it's as serious as we thought. Maybe originally, I think the number that was thrown out there was 50 or 60. So that was really alarming, and I think that's what really prompted us to create this coalition. Um, again, I, I've always backed the police department, and I'm always going to vote for more police or more money for the police, so I'm, I definitely, uh, will push for that. However, I think this is a separate topic, you know, I'm not here to criminalize the homeless. I think everybody deserves a second chance when they want one or need one. So I would like us to have some kind of job-ready program for those that are ready and willing to make a change, even if it's one or three people or the five. And, um, as far as the housing authority, I think Mr. Costa has mentioned that we could work with the county as far as, um, maybe working with them about getting some funds to support us in the housing authority. So I don't know where we'd go about, like, maybe we'd bark up Denise, Denise's tree and see what she has as far as information on that, grant money for the homeless.
Well, that all comes typically through HUD, so he, we can, we can definitely, we can throw our support with that. But they have a direct pipeline to get that funding.
Barbara, let me, how do we, and it's not comparison, uh, of course. It's just kind of, I guess, I'd like to know, Cameron, is there's higher, lower than ours, Thorndale? I know they're a smaller town, how are we in relation to other towns in, in Mylum County on the homeless issue?
That was not brought up, and I don't know. But when I, I know when I was talking to Round Rock, one of the things that was very surprising is given their population, their homeless is 15.
Really?
Yes, people. Housing, yeah.
As far as ability to, to assist these?
Right, they have more housing units.
Resources? I mean, that's where we're shy, is, is the resources and their ability.
But one of the things that they're doing, which I thought was interesting, is the, uh, the law enforcement recognizes that people are dropping people off here, like at the, at our city limits, partly because we've got Jason, and they're like, well, you got, you got a place to eat. That now that Temple has created a shelter, they're Ubering them to Temple.
Who is?
All the surrounding communities, the Round Rocks, the Georgetown's. And I was like, that could be a program for us too? You know, we're going to see if we've got an Uber ability that they, we need to have people where they can get help. And to, to the extent that we can help them here, we are very, very limited. So doing a jobs program, I think makes a lot of sense. And then for people who are hardcore, we need a place to stay, because we're going to freeze to death if we don't. Get them to a shelter.
And these 15 are people that were from Rockdale, they didn't come here from out of town, okay?
Three from Rockdale, or three?
I'm with Esme about, we've all talked about, and we did that exercise a while, I don't know how many months ago, about police officers, and we did go with a certain format, I think we were going to. There was one or two still in the academy, I think we had enough in there to get another one. I think for three in the, was that three, okay. Were, have we gotten those guys yet, or they?
We did, and we've lost two at the same time, so.
Still actively looking for, to replace those?
And, so it's.
Okay.
So we're constantly looking to keep them supplemented.
And this came up in a meeting a while back too, I don't know if it was just hearsay or not. Does the sheriff's department, in whatever capacity, do they help Cameron patrol? And if so, then do they not do it here and in Milano and Thorndale as well? Or do they not help patrol in Cameron? Do you know the answer to that? I know you're speaking for the deputies.
Naturally.
Were they just naturally riding around? I've never seen, okay, okay.
Well, their officers are in, their officers are in Cameron, DPS offices in Cameron. So naturally, there's more patrolling going on in Cameron just by accident, um, than, than we have here. What, what? I have a problem with this, the, 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 the job thing. I can probably go down any business down here, and they're hiring every single one of them.
But they don't have a driver's license, they don't have the documentation necessary to get a job. So it takes, it takes the Brittany Bell's to go out there and help them get that. And it takes somebody who's willing to put them to work, knowing that they'll have that at the end of the year. So, I mean, I thought.
Those people are out there. It's like Barrett's willing to do it, I know lots more that are willing to, but you got to want to go to work before you go to work.
Right, right, yeah.
I can't want for you. Let's just be real.
Can't make them stay at work, you know? And what about the homeless folks that have taken up residency in rental property? And what about the homeless folks that have taken up residency in rental properties? That obviously aren't theirs, you know? They get in there, they stay in there. And then the owners have, yeah, squatters. Then the owners have problems getting them out. What do those folks do?
Say it again?
That's awful.
They have three right now, he said, or y'all said.
We have three in our house on six thirty-seven Ackerman Street, right next to the daycare.
Yep.
They have brandished a gun on the front porch. The police say they can do nothing with that man with forty children in his home. So, we have, there are no lease. There was a gentleman that moved out and had one lady in there. One of, they've been living in the creek next to Tiger Town and six thirty-seven Ackerman. So, we have three in our house right now. We have no rights. It's, I mean, they, they know they're squatters and they know what they can do and they know how long they can stay. We have to file an eviction with no police.
I put no trespassing signs, the last one just walked past them. Paying no attention, heights and city breach.
And the police told Daniel the other day that they knew that the man in the wheelchair with one leg was mentally unstable. But the police could do nothing about him being in the house next door to the daycare.
So. Sure that hurts the daycare. Yeah.
Well, and there's certain, yeah. So, what is.
It blows my mind that this is allowed to happen.
This is the first I hear this.
Because there's, there's one particular individual that's homeless that is causing, is being disruptive all over town. In fact, he was firing gunshots across from my house the other day. He's the same guy that was in the wheelchair that's squatting. And, 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 and this is totally disruptive to everybody around, including yourselves as landlords.
What is.
Well, what they're doing is running electrical cords and they cut them. And then they, I've seen one dude in my, I had a squatter as well. And it's ridiculous.
Ma'am, I'll get with you after this meeting.
Brittany had a question.
Brittany? Or Doug had a question first. And then we're gonna move along.
I was a little bit more positive. It seems like the problem may have moved. The situation was formed because of some concerns of business owners downtown. And I did a follow-up. I went door-to-door downtown to see what the situation was. And all the owners that I talked to said it's not as bad as it was. There seemed to have been one person in particular that was causing a lot of aggravation and, and confrontation. And I don't think he's around. I mean, I, I mean, but anyway, all the owners said that it's much more relaxed now than it was six months ago. Or whenever the first reports started coming from downtown, but the problem's.
Alright, Brittany. Okay, alright.
What is, what, what is, what is the recommendation or what, what is the ask? Or what, what is, what is somebody asking of the council to do?
Well, what I'm asking is just accept the report and then give us guidance. Where do you want us to go with this?
Like, how much do you want the city involved? How much is with this?
Cause we, I mean, we don't do social services.
Yeah, I can't see your hand over there.
So, I think the top thing that came out of the meeting, or these meetings. And even with the sheriff, the assistant district attorney, I think was his idol, chief of police. All of those people there is, Rockdale needs to have two more officers on their police force somehow. One for special investigations and one for mental health. And that's what, that was one of the top things that came out of our last meeting. Because right now, there's nobody to help with mental, the mental problems that seem to be all over town. I mean, and they always have been as long as I've known Rockdale. There's always been somebody walking up and down the streets. You know, everybody sees it. Uh, and then we can't get, we can't help do anything about the drug problem in Rockdale. Until there's a way to investigate and get past the local user. That's a fact that everybody agreed on. So, if we can find a way to find somebody to put towards the police department. I, I, I don't know where it comes from. I, I propose that if part of your gaming ordinance be a permit that you had to purchase by terminal. There's a hundred eight-liners in this town inside the city limits. And there are Crockett, Texas, they charge a thousand dollars per terminal to operate. And that's, so that's a hundred thousand dollars that you could collect off of just one source.
I just wanna make something clear. And I think you know this better than I do. Gaming industry is not causing the drug problem, correct? Okay. The drug problem's there. And maybe there's a drug activity at the gaming location.
But the gaming industry is an illegal operation as it, as it stands right now.
As it stands.
An eight-liner is illegal in the state of Texas.
Correct.
Now, a municipality, municipality can license that.
Correct.
They have the ability to pass an ordinance and make it legal. But through that, they can also make it a.
But stipulation.
And I know, I had, I, I had that place by Pizza Hut that had eight-liners in it before we got them out. The guy that was operating those eight-liners before I shut it down was making about three hundred days, dollars a day per terminal. Do the math, a thousand dollars a year is nothing. So, I wanna start finding ways to generate revenue. Let's look at.
I agree.
Ways to generate revenue.
I agree.
Yes, ma'am.
So, something that I had asked Barbara about, I discussed the abandoned homes that are on the east side. I have your booklet ready. There was just, we wanted to present it to everyone and have everyone a fair shot to look at. We have twenty-eight abandoned homes on the east side that we discovered. And eleven of them are squatters. Where the city can get involved is developing like ordinances, not just single-family calling ordinances. But something that can at least summon them to court, get them in front of Judge Lander. Oh, no, they don't show up. So, now we're going to arrest them on that. Just, I mean, for lack of better terms, make their life a little bit more difficult. So, when you don't have Mr. Thomas Pezzle who are stuck in a situation. And then Rockdale PD who can't go in there and physically remove them, their hands are tied as well. I would like to see the city get involved on that level. And then to follow up on the gaming, Scott is right. It's not the gaming that is causing the drug problem. But it is our gaming, gaming room on the east side. That is generating so much criminal activity in this town. My question to Chief Metters during the meeting was, can you please tell me how many calls for services are performed there? His answer was, a lot. I can't give you the number. He said, my officers are at that game room daily.
Alright, this is the last, last, last go-around right here. What you got?
Um, my question, three weeks ago, there was a police officer that I met. And this police officer, I thought was a new officer? No.
Oh, can y'all, y'all have to.
And can we get her to go to the podium possible? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Is this pertaining the homeless coalition?
This has to pertain, the homeless coalition, this pertains to the drug traffic, this pertains to my area. This police officer was a contractor of, of Tech dot. This police officer worked twelve-hour shifts. She was amazed of all the traffic at night. This police officer asked me, doesn't the city of Rockdale know about homeland security grants? Police officer grants. I was told by Officer Goodrich that they look into that. Why can't we dig, you dig and dig and dig, the ci- the city responsible digs for funds? Why can't you dig and dig and dig for police officers for the city of Rockdale? I ha- I handed out homemade scarves to the homeless for Jason's area. There was more than ten, more than fifteen scarves I made. There's more than fifteen homeless people. So, yes, that has to be addressed.
Can I just say something? I think once again, um, the coalition, the homeless coalition was originally to help some of these people that were ready to be helped. I, I think I can speak for the council that we are aware of the problem when it comes to drugs. We are aware that we need more police and we discuss it all the time. And we are, like you're saying, we are looking for money. And we're trying to partner with MDD and other entities to get more money. And we did visit it when it came to budget, but it was gonna increase our tax rate incredibly. So, we weren't able to get more officers. Um, so, I, I think it's fair to say that we hear you. We understand that we have a drug issue. And we are good, continuing to attack it. I mean, there's some things that Chief Metters can't speak about. But I think I'd like for us to go back to the original mission of this homeless coalition. As far as how are we gonna help even the one or three people that are ready to be helped? I mean, I think, I mean, what do y'all think? Focus on the homeless? I mean, we're not police officers here. We'll leave that to the police. And we'll continue to fight for money for them as we, as we have.
But what about the ones that don't wanna be helped? I mean, what do we do with those?
Agreed. And I mean, do we leave that to the PD? We leave that to them and try, try to do our best.
The Indians are tied to an extent too. So, what's the resolution for those people?
So. So, are, are we looking for a motion? It's, it's, it's not really an action item, is it, to accept the?
Well, it's just to accept the report and then if you can guide us in the way that you wanna move. Cause there's, there is the, the law enforcement side of it. There's the compassionate side of it. There's the housing side of it. We can try all of them. We're gonna continue to meet but quarterly now. And see if we can't, you know, firm up our relationships with the housing authorities. So that as Mario was doing new housing at the end up by Hamilton where he got that four acres. That he's looking at the kinda things that we need for the people that might be living in their cars. Or, you know, they're just, the people that are down on their luck that are not voluntarily homeless. To help those or to help with mental health resources with people that, that just need it.
So, I know Chief, Chief's not here tonight. But, um, I, I keep hearing more police, more police, more police. It was my understanding, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, that we gave him, for lack of better terms, the ammunition that he needed to be able to go and recruit some officers. And that worked, kinda worked, didn't work. Um, situations change. So, I can't tell him how to get officers. He knows. I, I think my recommendation is for him to come back to us and tell us what more we can do to help you be able to recruit officers. And officers specific for items A, B, and C, whatever those, those are. Um, short of that, I, I, I think you have to start there. Because if we, if we, if we don't have his, if we don't support him, uh, in that effort. All of the rest of this is for nothing. Um, if, if he can't control, for lack of, if he can't control the streets because there's not enough individuals to do so. All the rest of this is for nothing. So, we have to, my opinion is we have to start there. And that has to be a recommendation back from him to let's go to plan B. What we tried the first time worked a little bit, let's tweak it. And if that's more money, if that's more, I, I don't know what that is, but I think we have to get that from the department, not.
Yeah, well, Lynn, what he's, uh, what I understand what you're saying, but what Chief Metters is saying is we brought up with the mental illness that's going on here with the people also. So, as a group, we brought that up that we might need to get some police officers in that field to help out. So, as of now, he doesn't have anybody that could fill, you know, those shoes in right now.
I, I understand that, but he has to come to us and make that, make that recommendation and that request. Before we can just say, here, here's some more money, go do this, go do this. He has to tell us what, what it is, how he's gonna spend it, then we can get on board with it. That's what we need to be able to support him. And it, and it's not a guarantee. He's gotta come to us with his recommendation and we gotta see what we can physically do. Um, but that's our starting point.
He's not trying to end-run you guys. This was not coming like, the chief was not trying to get more officers.
I know, I know. I, I know exactly. I'm not.
So, I would, I would agree with Lynn. And then I wanted to add something to that. Is, um, I think it needs to be a multi-pronged approach. So, yes, the police officers. Um, I think we do need to possibly, uh, think Jason Hill would be a great person to work with for a job-ready program. Um, to help the one to three that's ready, um, that we can get in the workforce if they want to. And then the third one would be to work with Mario with the housing authority. Um, he did say what Esme was saying earlier in the discussion. The commissioner's court, I think, is or has received around two million dollars. And they're gonna divide that out. Um, one thing it can go for is housing. Um, and then another thing it goes for is their roads. So, I think with those three things, um, we can maybe put a dent in the problem or start to chip away at it.
So, I, I, I've got one question for the coalition, I guess. As, as you said earlier, Barbara, Temple opened up this thing and now everybody's Ubering people to Temple. Cause they can get them there. I can give them a ride to Temple. First of all, that's what they need. But second of that is, when we do this, we got fifteen now. We do this, you got twenty to replace them. And when you get those twenty taken care of, you got forty-five more to replace those.
And that point was made, if you build it, they will come.
Exactly.
And that's why, but the reason they're here now, and I, I hate to keep saying this. But it's for easily available cheap drugs. That's why they're here. And it's not, not, I'm not talking about the people, the guy I interviewed today. I'm not talking about him. I'm talking about the people.
You're not talking about the three that wanna go to work. You're talking about the rest of them.
I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking about, and I, I do disagree that there are fifteen or twenty. Because I've been looking real hard lately. And there may be only fifteen or twenty walking the streets. But there's another fifteen or twenty living in people. It's like Bobby Pezzle's house.
That's an issue for me.
Yeah, that's a huge.
And that's, that's a major, these, these, this, and I, I don't wanna get off track, but if there's anything we can do.
Yes, ma'am.
The law prohibits them from going in. They're not eviction people. They, they, if, if they get a, if they get a notice from a, from a district attorney or somebody like that that says to remove those people, they can do that. But they can't just go in there and arbitrarily say, you gotta get out of this house cause Bobby Pezzle wants you out of town.
It is trespassing.
I, I realize that, but that's, that's.
It is trespassing though.
It's been that way for them.
You know, it's straight up trespassing. Why is that? Okay.
It's been that way for years. It's the same as, if somebody quits paying you rent, you can't just get them out like that.
But that's an eviction.
When they're on a lease before.
That's different. That's an eviction.
No, I agree. And I, it is separate from the homeless coalition. But I believe because it's so close to the daycare, that's a huge concern. So, if we can have a motion for the city police to attack that and nip it, whatever we need to do. I think that, that'd probably be the best thing that comes out of this last twenty minutes.
I got rid of mine, by the fuck.
Alright, so, I guess this is, we've received the report, Barbara, or.
Thank y'all for the report. Everybody that worked on the report, thank y'all.
Received the report, uh, no, no action at this point other than.
Can we make an action to address the situation across from the childcare center?
And then any, just anything, yeah, we're gonna continue to meet formally. We'll keep the board back. But if there's, I know that we've got a council member, Oliveras, that really wants to concentrate on the mental health. Which we may be getting some opioid funding from the, the settlement. That if we can bolster what's happening at the one-stop. As, as long as we're on, going on the right path and you don't think that we've just gone down a rabbit hole. If we, I mean, like if we keep working this, cause we're, we will bring back ordinances that I think that will help with this. With a gaming room ordinance and anti. that I think that will help with this, with a gaming ordinance and anti panhandling ordinance and, and anti-camping ordinance. Those are things I'm hearing amenities that they have done that help with this. Um, so those are things that we'll be coming back with.
So, Esme had a question. I don't know the answer to. And can we address the?
I, I would, the captain is gonna gi- give me a briefing on it. And then, yes, we will see what we can do and how we can help. I'm not sure what precinct that's in, if it needs to be an eviction or what needs to happen, but yeah.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Yeah, uh, one last thing I'll say on this homeless coalition. Um, I believe it's a great group of people. However, I do feel like there has been a lot of guest invited, which is great. However, whenever you have fifty minutes, it's hard to get anything done when there's twenty different people talking. So I don't know if maybe the city council would like to appoint, I know last time we just kinda took volunteers.
Yes.
Maybe the city council could appoint maybe a group of five people that they feel would be appropriate.
Good idea.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it's great. I, I appreciate everybody. Uh, but it's hard to get anything done when there's twenty different people. Hey, I can't always make it, but I'm glad they changed the schedule. I don't have to be there. Or can we do that later? I don't wanna take up any more time.
You gonna table it?
Well, there's nothing to table. We've accepted, we've heard their report.
Let's go and thank y'all for the report everybody worked on.
Let me ask a question. Is it possible we could get Judge Waden to issue an order to get that one mentally unstable man away from that daycare? They do have a curriculum and they are considered ill.
Yep.
Ms. Holly.
Goodrich, I'll get with you and Goodrich after the meeting and we'll, uh, put an action plan together. Does that sound good? All right. Number F, consider. Okay.
I make a motion to accept the report as presented?
A second.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. F, consider and take any necessary action on a deputy city manager position, deputy city manager position.
So this was a request from council members to add this. And I know that this had been a discussion about getting some help. And what I've done is, the first I've just gotta tell you, you guys are just getting a great deal. So when I looked at the TCMA, um, and candidly, I'm not, I have never been here for the money. I have already retired. You're getting thirty-seven years' worth of experience. So I've never asked for the salary that would be commensurate with this position. And I've never made this low money since early two thousand, maybe nineteen nineties. But if you, I, I think that to have a deputy means that you're gonna have a city manager and a deputy. And I think that this community is too small and there is no other community in the five thousand population range that has that. If what you're looking for is a change in direction, just let me know you don't wanna renew my contract and then let's get another city manager in here. What you need to be prepared to do, though, is under the TCMA salary survey for twenty twenty-two, this physician should be getting paid about a hundred and thirty-two thousand. That's forty-two thousand dollars more than is currently budgeted or being paid for this position. Cause I have kept my salary consistent with the public works and the police chief. So, y'all are just getting a hell of a deal, I can just tell you that. But if, uh, if what you want is a, is a, it's a different way to go, then I think what needs to happen is it would be better to start advertising for a city manager and let's work that way, if that's what the, the, I, the goal of the council is.
I'll, I'll jump in.
We have few people that signed up. You wanna do that first?
Yeah.
All right. Dave Milton.
Since we, to be generous, bent the rules tonight, I would like to say on the homeless, if you live in an RV park or if you live in Sky Inn or if you live in another motel, by law, you are homeless. So this idea of fifteen homeless is nuts. There's plenty of homeless that need help. Um, I'm kinda gonna, uh, I'm not here speaking against or for this new position. I just wanna talk about the reality of budget and dollars to spend. Because I was a part of the meeting where our chief has been saying we need five new officers and they're putting a price tag on that of somewhere between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're hearing that this new position obviously would have a price tag with it. We have a library, myself, that thinks we are understaffed. A library that's only open Monday through Friday from eight until five or from nine until five is not serving the whole public. You just can't be if people can't get there when you're open. So there's so many budget staffing issues. I just wonder how well this idea was vetted out and shown to be something affordable, that you're not gonna come back to the, to the people in this community with a crazy-ass rate hike in our taxes to be paying for all these positions. I think that there needs to be some kind of a workshop that you all do to decide what are our primary needs in staffing throughout the city before we just add another position that may or may not be needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, Belinda?
I'm Belinda Hillhouse, seven zero seven Middleton. Um, everybody's pretty much said what I had to say anyway, which is that we don't have the money for that. Barbara is a very good city manager. I've known three city managers that we've had and of those three, she's the best one. Uh, a question though, Steve. Uh, the sheriff's deputy that was the mental health person, is he back at work now after he got shot? How long?
He just had surgery last week.
Yeah. So he's the only one we had in the county that was mental health? Can the sheriff's department get another one? Right, right, we know. Okay. Anyway, uh, we had an assistant city manager who was our city secretary. She knew the rules. She was extremely good. We have a new secretary. She will get there. You don't need somebody else. Give her a chance. Let her learn everything. And don't go out and hire somebody else when we don't have the money. And, uh, we've had several police officers, I think, come here because they knew Chief Metters. They liked him. They wanted to work with him. But eventually they have to realize that they need to pay their mortgage and they need to eat. So we need to get them some more money. But you've heard that for the last fifteen minutes. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Belinda. All right, I'll turn it over to council.
I'll jump in. So, call the position whatever you want, deputy city manager, assistant city manager. The idea and, and if I'm putting words in anybody's mouth, speak up. The idea and the, uh, general consensus was that we would look for a interim city manager, a deputy city manager, an assistant city manager with the understanding that Ms. Holly's not gonna be here forever. And that we wanted a smooth transition from city manager current to city manager future. And the only way to have that is to have some overlap. In that same discussion, Ms. Holly asked for a, we agreed to a one-year, uh, contract. And, uh, that was back in September, October or something like that. So September, i- if one year is what we agreed to and one year is what Ms. Holly was, had agreed to, that's coming up, um, quicker than you think. Um, so I don't know what Ms. Holly's intentions are after this one year. I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the council's, uh, intentions are when that one year is up. But what I can get on board with is that we have to have time to get somebody up to speed prior to Ms. Holly leaving. And finding that person is not an overnight deal either. Um, we don't want to hire the worst.
What's that?
The best.
The worst.
What's left over from somebody else. We don't wanna hire somebody that we really don't want, but it's the best of what was given to us. We want to go out and actively pursue the person that we want and we wanna have time to do that. And we want to have time for that person to, not only for us to do that, but to have some overlap, um, in the city managers, uh, under the city, current city manager. That's where all of this arose from. Not, um, because we want to create another position, not because we have excess funds that we're trying to get rid of. It's, we're trying not to lose what we do have with Ms. Holly when she walks out the door by nobody knowing what's going on in the city. That's, and I push for that. That's, that's on me. I'll take that. And, but that was my train of thought. And that's where we are today, as far as I know. So. No.
No, this is strictly council.
I think you did a great job of summarizing all that.
But there was an add-on, is for her to stay in another position if she wanted.
We, we, correct. Um, we talked about the need. We felt like, uh, the growth and the things that are happening around Rockdale that you see but maybe don't recognize that it, that it's happening or it hasn't hit you yet, that things are happening around this town. And planning and zoning and urban planning needs to be going on. Whether somebody wants to fund it or not, it needs to be happening. And I would argue that when somebody says we don't have the money to do it, we don't have the money not to do it.
I agree with that.
Which is your expertise, correct? Yes.
I agree with that statement.
Because it, it's needed. Um, somebody needs to have their finger on the pulse of, uh, development. And it's a lot for any one person to do it.
What was, when we agreed on this, she, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a certain amount of days that she would give us in the event that she were to resign.
It's sixty or ninety days, something like that.
Sixty or ninety days. Standard.
Right. I've been through, I've been through searching for superintendents and higher level people. It's tough.
Yeah.
They're not just beating down the door to get to Rockdale, Texas.
Right.
Promise you. And so if we think, if, if Ms. Holly gives us thirty days when she's ready to leave, we're about a hundred and twenty behind.
Well, and what you just said to me, i- it makes a lot of sense with why, you know, we stick where we're at, but prepare for any changes. So if we need to jump into to where we have more time to make those decisions. Um, but it's like he said, I mean, if Colonel Grange is knocking on the door for two years for somebody, you're correctly right. There is nobody that's just knocking on the door to get to Rockdale, Texas.
And LaGrange is beautiful. LaGrange is beautiful, too.
Understood. Understood. And right now, what we have is somebody that is qualified, that's working under budget. Um, and is, in my opinion, been a great leader and, and phenomenal, uh, city manager. So whatever we need to do to, to, you know, if there's a point where she's, we're looking at transition, um, I agree, we need to be well-prepared in, in advance to do that.
I think we're, I don't want all of our eggs in one basket, not, not for her leaving. It's this. You never know what happens to anybody. Um, and when you, and right now, all of our eggs are in your basket. Um, and I think that we need some redundancy in, in the city management position.
I agree with all that. I would love for us to be more proactive about this and reactive with the growth and other projects coming on.
So the, the.
But it all comes down to budget right now, currently. Um, but.
I mean, when we spoke about it.
All this has gotta stay at the council.
Whenever, whenever we spoke about this, when you, this was gonna cost us more money and we were gonna find it, right?
We, we talked about the, the sale of the land was, was, uh.
Right. And MDD's supposed to give us some money. No?
Who?
No way.
Who? Who are you talking about?
I thought we're supposed to be getting money from the sale of the property.
Already got it.
We already spent it?
No. It's, no, it's in our.
Right? I think it's definitely a necessity. I mean, September's not even si- is it six months out? Five months out? So are we gonna make a motion?
Oh, that's part of this one.
So, so I think, I think the, Barbara, I think one of your, well, you recommend us not spending the money and I appreciate you not wanting us to spend the money, but.
Well, no, but if what you're, if, if, if really what you're looking for is you want a new city manager and you want the overlap, then let's go forward and do this. Just let me know that as of Sept-, uh, which is like October, that you don't wanna renew my contract and then we'll go forward.
No, what we talked about back there was, it wasn't that we didn't wanna renew your contract. We might wanna change your duties to more of the planning and urban development at some point. And I think that point is here. So it's not a matter of kicking Barbara out the door. It's a matter of utilizing Barbara for what's best, what her best asset for the city is.
And the overlap was to keep all of your knowledge that you have in City of Rockdale to be able to pass on.
So, but I, I, if I understood, uh, there, there was an email you sent out asking about duties. I don't, I don't, I can't answer those. I don't know how to answer you on what those duties should be posted. I, I would, I would not post it as a deputy. I would have posted as an assistant city manager, maybe? Is that, is it?
Is it the same?
Is that the s-
No, deputy means they're gonna step into the shoes. Assistant, not necessarily. They're kinda learning. Um, but however you wanna do it.
Because here, here, here's the other reality. If, if we get, if we hire somebody and they get them in here for two months and we figure out that they're a whack job, I would rather know it when they're assistant super, assistant city manager rather than you're our city manager and you're a whack job. Um, that's, it's a time to vet them. As an assistant versus head honcho.
I agree. And I would love to see what, having to yourself and assistant, I'd love to see what you all could do together.
What do we need to do?
Couldn't agree more, huh?
What do we, what do we need to do?
It's gonna be, we have to really aggressively budget that. Cause it's, I mean, in order to do this, cause you can't bring in an assistant at the level. You're not gonna, and, and at that point, then I can't stay at eighty. I'm gonna, it's gonna have to be a ratcheted position. Um.
Well, I guess what I would like to see out of this is for this, let's address this. Maybe not sitting here right now, but let's, don't kick this to month after month after month. And let's figure out what we're gonna do and figure out how we're gonna budget for it and get creative on where, where we get the money. Um, and how we, how we, where we rob Peter to pay Paul from. I don't, I don't know, but we can't. Not doing anything is not an answer. It's not a, to me.
Could we potentially have you come back, uh, next meeting and put, and come up with a recommendation as to how much we should budget for that salary and what those duties would be for that person? I mean, only you know what, what are these.
I've got, I've got the budget. Yeah, I gave you the twenty twenty-two and I gave you what the. Yeah, it's, and actually in the memo, it's the.
But you're saying, I mean, eighty, you're saying we can't afford eighty thousand.
Well, the assistant can't make more than this.
Right, correct. And all these are like a hundred plus, so.
Right.
I mean, I don't feel like this really helps.
This is actual city manager.
No, these are actual, okay, so this is for the city managers.
If you keep going, you get to the ones that aren't in blue, those are deputies.
So if you go to the TCMA, Texas City Manager Association, their salary survey, and you do it for a community of our size, this position should be at a hundred and thirty-two. Then a deputy is gonna run or an assistant is gonna run anywhere between, say, sixty and ninety of whatever the city manager makes. So that's gonna be between seventy-one-five to one-nineteen. So you're talking about anywhere from a hundred and, say, sixty thousand extra to, um, a hundred and forty thousand extra, that we're gonna have to figure out. Now, one of the things, it's not a good idea, we have the six acres that we have several interested parties in, that I think Jim's put it back out to bid, hopefully. Okay, you could use that as a short-term basis to do double funding, but my recommendation is still, we've got to get Gerald's group up to par, cause we're, we're really hurting on the utility side. Everything is fracturing. They had an eight-inch line break over by the SWAT building, where they had to come in with a shiny new sixteen, seventeen thousand dollar valve because they couldn't get the water all shut off, so they're having to do it, to do it while it's hot, meaning the water's rushing out, while we've got citizens angry that we didn't jump the same day on a two-inch water line leak that was not gonna drain the towers. We've got to get his guys, the equipment and the help that they need, and then you've gotta get it with police.
I get it.
And so those are the, to me, from an operational point of view, those are the places that you need to be. But if you need something short-term, you could use whatever we bring in from the six acres to do some kind of an overlap. And, and help fund that, but from a budgeting point of view, I would be telling you that you will have a, a set end date from me, cause I'm not gonna put the community in that kind of a financial bind. And I think it really would be, and I'm not going anywhere, my ranch is just fourteen minutes away. You know, I have grandbabies and goats, I will be on the ranch. So if you ever need help, I'm here, and I'm not gonna burn any bridges with this community because it means too much. So.
So workshop. How, how do, no workshop.
What do you, what do you think, Denise? What are your thoughts, Denise?
She says, why don't you tell him money?
She said a workshop in four months.
I think June's a good time. I really think Barbara does a good job, and while I understand where you're coming from, Lynn, I also agree with you about our funds should be put towards what we have, that are so underpaid as it is, you know? And we can't have an assistant in here that's gonna make more than Barbara, so we'd have to raise Barbara's and, um.
And I have thought to keep my salary low.
And also TML, you know, if we, if we, if y'all were to get hung up in that situation, uh, that she would leave for whatever reason, TML will send you a more than qualified interim to serve until you do find somebody, however long that is.
I don't know about that, TEA sent us a superintendent that was more than qualified when we were without one at school, and that didn't work out so bad.
But there are firms that do that, and you can get, now, they will not transition over to be your city manager, but you could, I've worked for Texas First, Randy, when he was here twice, was with Texas First, you can get that. And then if you find out that they are wigged out, just send them on their way and you get another one. So you, uh, you do have that option of doing something like that. And, but I, I understand your need to build depth in the, in the, in the organization. It just would be better if we could use it with another person, like if, if it was Shanna, or if it was the chief, or somebody else who could understudy to do that. Terry was perfect because she could've carried the organization forward while we made that decision, but, you know, she went for her pastors.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
So in chief's spare time, we're gonna fill him?
So can Terry come back?
So I have a question, I guess it's for, um, council. So what has changed from the plan that we had back there in, uh, September, October to now?
I'm still on board.
I mean, it's.
I think the money is, uh, the problem.
You say the money may come from the six acres from the sale of that land, where was it gonna come from when we were discussing it in September, October?
It was the land.
One, you're talking about the land for cornerstone, she's talking about the six acres.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, okay.
I'll solve this tonight, but let's, don't let it keep going and going and going.
Can we approve?
I'm one person, y'all can tell me, shut up, and y'all can, you can all without me, that's fine.
Can we approve for a, um, listing to go out? So that we start getting activity, maybe interest in people, and have a workshop to discuss what that money looks like?
I think we have to have, figure out what, we have to, I think we have to agree where the monies are come from first, before you advertise, I guess, if you get, I don't know.
Well, I mean, like you said, it's six months, so if we put it off another month, that's five months.
Maybe we can make a motion and have a workshop.
Yep.
To discuss this further, along with the salary, potential salary. I mean, I'm all about Maslow, I'd love that money to go to safety and police. But we need this too.
So.
Yes, yes.
So then, hold on, I have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Denise.
I mean, what if y'all, would you be planning to have a long-term assistant? Cause you don't know if Barbara's gonna leave or stay for how long, I mean.
Right, I don't know if Barbara's gonna be here tomorrow.
Right.
I, I don't, I mean.
Right.
The only, only one's guaranteed is this one right this second.
I guess what she's asking is for Barbara.
We have nobody underneath, we have, if something happens to Roxanne, the finances are in shambles. If something happens to Barbara, the city management side of things are in shambles. If something happens to Gerald.
Oh, boy.
It's, the water department's in shambles.
For them.
What's that?
You know.
Do have assistants to them. One assistant's right over there, Gerald's got assistant Joseph Montalongo, we do have assistants, we do have redundancy.
So I have a question, we do this workshop, and then what happens? We have to come back to next month's meeting to vote before it goes out?
Well, you can do a workshop and have, actually have it be a meeting at the end of it. There's no reason that you can't take action.
Just in a workshop?
I know, there's supposed to be a water audit special workshop, and you might be able to combine the two, if you can get everybody to agree to the date, and Mr. Smith is agreed to.
Monday, the twentieth?
Um, the, next Monday, or?
Can y'all do that?
I can agree to that, but I.
Okay, so I was supposed to have a public meeting. No, with my, with the, uh.
Esme.
On the church.
You wanna do a motion to do that workshop on the twentieth with the water?
Serving on Washington Heights. Yeah, so I'll have to do that on, we'll have to.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to further discuss a potential assistant city manager and discuss this potential salary and the funding.
On the twentieth?
March two, or twenty?
Or, we're not, you're not saying a date?
On the twen- or, on the twentieth?
If we can swing it, but.
Together with the water department, the water workshop, right?
I think you're making the motion either way, if we can swing it for the water department.
Yeah, either way. I need a second.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries five one. Number nine, executive session.
Are we done yet? Right, I'm done for today.
Rockdale City Council will now convene into executive session pursuant to sections of the Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven seven, five five one dot zero eight seven, and five five one dot zero seven four of the Texas Government Code to deliberate about purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property for the purpose of commercial development inside the district's boundaries, and to discuss economic development negotiations related to the same commercial development known as Project Bluebird. Section five five one dot zero seven four, deliberation of any personnel or confidential matters. Time is seven twenty-seven PM. All right, the board will now reconvene into open session, the time is eight. Are there any motions?
No action out of executive session.
That's it?
That's it.
Don't forget to sign up for your recycling.